Motion by Nancy. Second by Ashley. I'm going to abstain. Trace number forty-five, fifty-one, two ninety-one, and three fifty-five. Aaron Craig, Aaron on? Nope, all right. All in favor? Motion carries. Did you get the count?
Yep.
Thanks. Recognition holiday card. We had Bailey Bradshaw won, and we recognized her down in the high school lesson I did yesterday, the day before lesson?
Monday.
Monday. So she has her card, and she got a set of cards. It was a fifty-dollar check from the district. We were winning that. We didn't have a lot of submissions this year, but you can see that card. It's, I think it's on the other page. A nice Christmas scene with fire. So that's what went out to our faculty and staff too on Friday. Very nice Merry Christmas. All right. All right. Well, congratulations Bailey, if you can see us on camera.
How many turn the phone?
Not working. All right, moving on to the program evaluation, Mr. Twinner and Ms. Morris.
We brought Sam with us today.
He's a real type president, yeah. So I don't... Do you all have the printouts or anything, or do you need to go over them? Okay, just kind of a brief. We have two hundred and eleven in high school. It's about a hundred and seventy unduplicated in the Ag Ed program between the two of us, and then eighty middle schoolers. So that'll be, we switch out at semester, so we're fixing to get a brand-new set of seventh graders and eighth graders in next year. We've got our split down there of classes. I think our biggest class right now is Act Science One with forty-eight kids, and then followed up quickly by the sophomores, where there's about forty-four of them. On the upper level, I think constructions probably are...
Two sections of that construction, twenty-nine kids in Bode, and I'll have a couple more in there next semester, but kids not going back to Bode Tech.
We had a couple new classes this year, floral design, which will be landscaping in the spring semester. I've got about twelve kids in there right now, and they are really asking if they can do floral design for a whole year at some point because they like it a lot. We're working on Christmas wreaths right now. And then biotechnology, which is a new class. I've got seven students in there, hoping next year can have a few more in there. On the FFA side of things, we have about a hundred and sixty-six members in high school, and then we actually let junior high kids come in this year if they wanted to come to just the at-school meetings, so that way they can have a little incentive to join next year. We've got eleven of those. About study from last year. You want to talk about price metal wood projects?
What are we under? Oh, so some curriculum changes. In the past, you may have seen large metal projects and whatnot coming out of a shop in a year like this. I'm sure you guys have recognized what the cost of materials have done, and it's just not fair to ask a kid to pay four times what he would have paid last year to build a trailer or something. So we're doing a lot of smaller wood-type projects. He's redoing a sign for the front of the building. We've got some wood Christmas trees. We've got a couple desks. We've got a dining room table, those sort of things. Wood hasn't... Woods came back down to earth a little bit more, so that's kind of a smaller, I guess you would call that a curriculum change. We do have some, like, maintenance-type things that are going on as well. We did some lawnmower repairs. We've done seat spreader attachment, projects that need fixed, which is a good skill for kids to, how to do as well. So that's been one of the bigger changes from what I typically teach in the show.
And then our only other big one was the addition of the floral design landscape class in biotech. Some of our successful events that we've had this year earlier in the spring of last year, so it's been a year since we've done a report, we took twenty-eight students to get their TSA testing, which is saying that they have, if they score proficient, they met the criteria, they learned everything in the classes that they were supposed to. We took twenty-eight students to get tested. Twenty-two of them met the proficient status. So that's a pretty good majority, hoping to increase that a little bit this year. And we started landscaping in the Circle Drive, because Ms. Madder was like, we're going to make this place look pretty, and we're going to try and do a little bit of that each year in the landscaping class.
And they even moved inside. Don't forget that.
Yes, yes. We're going to work on some inside, putting some, making it look a little more, I don't know, green inside the high school and the middle school. Our convention in April, we had seven students receive their state-of-fay degree. Three kids were recognized as area proficiency winners. Mandy Stover placed third in the state for employment skills, Sarah Geiman fifth in the state for Division Two public speaking. And Sarah Geiman actually here earlier in November, right after Thanksgiving break, she placed second in state for fall speaking, so that was, that was really cool. Got to go down, and we had a fancy lunch and everything, and she knew what utensils were correct to use, and all that good stuff. Our national convention, we took kids in October, thankful we got to have an in-person convention again. We saw eight students receive their American degree. Actually had four of them go. I believe Garrett was there. Got to see him walk across the stage. Seven students attended leadership camp this last summer. We had a barbecue again this year. And fall sales, which I think I've got the final invoice today, and we made about three thousand dollars in profit on that. And then just our local events, top thirty regular meetings, all that kind of stuff.
And just this week, we found out three of our students got a thousand-dollar SAE grant as well from the National FFA, which is pretty cool. There's only three hundred given out in the whole country, so that was pretty cool.
You want to talk about future goals?
I can.
So you supervise technical.
Yep, yep. So their work project.
One of the future goals is TSA testing. We're wanting all the seniors to have tested and pass their area career interest. We're wanting five or more competing teams at state. I know we're working pretty hard on parley. I'm working on that this year, parliamentary procedure, and we're looking forward to that. We're going to continue the landscaping. We're hoping to get three Star Chapter rating at national level, which would be pretty nice. The mom sale next year, is there anything different?
In the fall? Well, it's been a while since I've had a mom sale. I don't remember when the last time was that Morris had one, but we're going to try to have a mom sale next year. I know a lot of people expressed interest in that.
And then attending Washington Leadership Conference. That's something we haven't done in the past few years that we're hoping to get back into. That was a good experience for a lot of kids, and it'd be good to get that going again.
That's all we have for you all.
Good deal. Looks good. Thank you all.
I have a question. I would really like to see some of the stuff you're doing on our website, because I think people would really enjoy seeing that, some of the contests. I know you have put some online, okay? But I would like to see more of what you're doing.
Yeah, we'll get with, it's usually Fisher that runs.
Fisher runs the Facebook page and the website.
And if you want to get some video.
I think we had an interview with Mr. Bishop, didn't we, through the broadcasting program? Wasn't that?
Yes, we did.
We did, yeah. We did.
That's a new package going out soon. I learned that term "package."
Package, yes.
If you don't follow us on, we have our own Tipton FFA Facebook page. It's Tipton Mo FFA Facebook page, because there's a Tipton Indiana, I think.
And I think people enjoy seeing these big names, things like that.
Let me know what hour you have floral.
The more you see, the better they want.
I'll get a camera. An AR tape.
We got Tucker a fake one.
Any other questions?
Thank you guys for all your work. Thanks, yeah. Thank you all for everything you guys have done. Appreciate it. So after you see that leadership show on the board meeting, I like that.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to presentations. We've got Graves and Associates. So Graves, can you hear us? Let me see if I can reach you. Do you have a, like, end of PDA or have a foot in there? That's probably one. Mr. Graves, try it again.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we got you.
Perfect. Can you see the audit report up there?
We can't, yeah. But we've got, we have copy too.
Perfect. Okay, if you guys are ready, yes, Lindsey Graves, Graves and Associates CPAs here to present your two thousand and twenty-one audit report. The first three pages of the report are what you're entitled to do, and that's to perform an audit in accordance with professional standards to render an opinion on your financial statements. We're coming back to you all again this year with what we call an unmodified opinion, and basically, if that's what you want to hear from us, is that nothing came to our attention during the course of the audit that would have rendered any modifications to that opinion. The next section of your audit report are the financial statements. We're required to present your income statement and your balance sheet in two different formats. I am going to jump ahead to the way your income statement by fund, since that's the way you're more accustomed to seeing your financial statements here. I'm just going to hit on a couple of highlights. The first being that overall revenues, focusing on funds one and funds two, since those are your operating funds, your general fund, and your teacher's fund. Overall revenues for those two funds were up about fourteen percent compared to two thousand and twenty. A lot of that this year is course-driven by the stimulus monies. Overall expenditures were up about nine percent. Of course, if we see revenues increase, we would expect to see expenses increase, especially with all this stimulus money. Overall, you had a net income of just over two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars in those two funds for the year. One of the things that we look at to determine the financial health of the district is how many months of operating expenses you have built up in those reserves. And of course, we zero out the teacher's fund, fund two, away just under two million dollars in general fund for the year, and that averages out at just under four months for the year. And what this is, is we're looking at this as an across-the-board comparative thing for multiple districts and use this for other entities, general entities as well. And so it's basically a worst-case scenario that if you would get into significant issues with your federal, state, or your local monies, revenues coming in, that you would have four months of reserves built up to meet those operating obligations. And then I've included my calculation over here in the bottom left. I often get the question of how I come up with that number, so as you can see, it was just under four months. We typically recommend organizations, districts such as yourselves, to have four to six months of reserves built up, so you all are pretty in line with that, that benchmark that we use as a firm. The next section of your audit report are the notes to the financial statements, and these go on for quite a few pages. I'm just going to hit on a few highlights here as well. These provide narrative to the financial statements. And so the first one I'm going to go over is note two here, your cash and cash equivalents footnote. State statute requires your deposits to be fully insured by FDIC insurance or by collateral pledged in the district's name. And this note disclosures is stating that as of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, you all met this requirement. And what this is, is that if the financial institutions themselves would default, that the district would be covered and essentially be able to get those deposits back, and that's why that's written into the state statutes there for protection for the district. Next page, page seventeen, long-term debt. Of course, we had a new issue, or refinancing of debt and payoff of the refinancing here, and that is disclosing that information to you all, and then also the repayment schedule through two thousand and forty-one. And then the lease purchase, we didn't have too much going on here. We just continued to pay that off in accordance with the schedule for two thousand and twenty-one. The next note, note five, retirement plan. This is disclosing that the district met the fourteen-and-a-half percent PSRS contribution for the year, and then also the six-point-eight-six percent for peers contributions, required contributions for the year. And then note twelve down here, tax abatements. This has been around for, hmm, probably, gosh, probably four or five years now, and this is that if the district provides any tax... I'm sorry, Mr. Skipover. No, I apologize. I'll finish that one, and then I'll go back to the taxes. The tax abatements is, this is what the, the community is foregone, basically, to bring business into the area in Monata County to provide jobs and other economic growth, and in giving those tax abatements to local businesses, this is what the actual effect of just under forty-five thousand dollars was in tax revenues for the district. And then if I back up here to the taxes footnote, so operating in Cooper, Morgan, Monata counties, looking at your current and delinquent taxes, you have ninety-eight percent for Cooper, a hundred percent for Morgan, and a hundred and one percent for Monata, and that's in current delinquent tax collections. We typically see these collections in the ninety-six to ninety-nine percent in central Missouri, so for all three of those counties, they're well within those. I like to pick on the two thousand and eight recession, when we saw delinquencies increase, and then we saw, and so some of these percentages dropped off, and then they caught up as economic conditions turned around. So you'll basically see these percentages ebb and flow year to year, just based on what's going on, but that ninety-six and ninety-nine percent is what we commonly see. And what we're doing here is also reasonably determining that the district has received all of the current and delinquent taxes that are, that you all are entitled to. Last note, note thirteen here, evaluation of subsequent events. So we're performing your audit as a June thirty, thirtieth each year, but we're required under professional standards to review any significant events that happen subsequent to that date before the date of our audit report, which is December thirteenth this year. And again, I don't have anything new, but we are, for a second year, disclosing that as of the date of your audit report, COVID was still going on. Back in, now feels like a hundred years ago, back in May, maybe in June, when I was talking to my boards, I was telling them at that time that hopefully we would be able to get rid of that, you know, sometime soon, and then of course, everything keeps layering and edging on that, and so we're just awaiting guidance from the profession at some point in the future when we'll be able to remove that from our audit reports. Next section of your audit is budgetary comparison schedule. This is required to be done in accordance with state statute for funds one and two, and so this is basically disclosing that you all have met that requirement in the budgetary process. Next section of your audit report is federal compliance. New this year, at least we haven't done it since probably two thousand and fifteen or so, I would guess, is you all are subject to a single audit, and that is a compliance audit of your federal programs, and if you spend more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a year of federal monies, you're subject to a single audit. And so we come in, and it's on a rotational basis, and so this year, we audited the education stabilization fund, or what you guys are more accustomed, the ESR monies, and then we also did food service. And so we're testing that, that, taking a sample, and that money, that those monies were spent on allowable costs, those sorts of things. With you all jumping up, and you spent just over one point three million this year, you were well above that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar threshold that triggers the single audit there. And then the next section here, government auditing standards. This is not anything new. If you're not subject to, if school districts in those stadiums are not subject to single audit, DESI still requires your audit to be performed in accordance with this government auditing standards, or more commonly referred to as the yellow book. And it's basically a higher level of auditing. We have to have at least forty hours a year in continuing education to even be able to perform these audits, et cetera, so that's disclosing that to you all. And then here is the official letter, where we're coming back to you with an unmodified opinion on the compliance for the federal programs. And I'll skip ahead of that because I like here on page thirty-three, finally, after all these words, et cetera, here we say, state what I feel is the clearest, type of financial statement opinion, an unmodified type of opinion on compliance for the federal programs, unmodified as well, but they bury it way back here in standards that are still in the back. And then there, it's disclosing which programs we audited this year for compliance. We're coming back to you all with one finding this year, nothing different than historical, and that's the segregation of duties finding, and as I think I talked to you guys last year, I really wish that the profession would come up with a different word than finding for this, because I think of a finding as being, we performed the audit, we found something that was quoting one and one, and then we write, write the district up about it, and then you all provide an explanation of, you know, how it will be corrected, and the estimated completion date, and all of that. But given the size of the district, it's just not possible to fully segregate duties in all areas, and when I say that, for example, it's keeping assets separate from the accounting system. And so nothing came to our attention during the course of the audit, but it is just a risk that errors or omissions could happen, and we are looking at each year what, what controls are in place, basically, to maximize the number of people that you have and other resources to prevent omissions from happening, but it's just a risk that exists given the size of the district. And then now, this has been around for a few years. We have to do a corrective action plan, and so for that finding, we have to have you guys put it on your letterhead, and then Dr. Robinson signed back here on that. And here, I like to go to this with my ones, this completion date, non-applicable, because I think it looks weird, for lack of a better word, of here's a finding, but we don't have an actual completion date. And again, we just expect, due to the size of the district, that that's going to be an ongoing thing, and so that's what they require us to do, is just to say it's not applicable, a completion date, because again, it is written for if, if there was truly something wrong being done, again, for lack of a better word. And then the last section of your audit report, DESI requires us to perform an examination of certain statistics, and we're coming back with an unmodified opinion on this as well. Most of those statistics have to do with transportation and attendance, and so then there's four pages of that information that DESI requires us to report an examination on, and it goes on. There are two letters that accompany the audit report. The first is the communication of audit results. I don't have anything different this year than I did last, but I'm just going to hit on a couple of highlights here as well. The first being, we're required to review any significant estimates that management makes, and so this is disclosing that we also reviewed revenues, budgeting of revenues, and of course, you all as a board, you're involved in that process too, but as an independent auditor, we're required to look at that and determine that we believe that it's reasonable as well. And then we also have to further bring to your attention the sensitivity of that having your deposits covered by FDIC or another means, again, to protect the district from any default of financial institutions. And then separate but related difficulties encountered in performing the audit and disagreements with management. If we would have had anything that was significant enough that it gets escalated into this letter, we're required to reach out to you all as the governing body ahead of time and say, hey, these are the issues that we're having, and that's typically been the board president or the treasurer. And as this exposes, we didn't have any difficulties in performing the audit. It took longer this year, just since you all have not been subject to single audit since, you know, two thousand and fifteen, or I can't remember exactly the, the era years. But again, I like to go over that with my boards. And then disagreements with management. I've luckily only had a few of these happen in my career, and they, they're not a good situation. If management is having significant disagreements with the independent auditor or vice versa, it's not a good situation, and so it's typically led to us resigning from the engagement, and again, we have to notify you all ahead of that, of time. And I do often get the question, what's my most common difficulty encounter performing the audit? And actually, now that I think back, it's been, most of the last ten years, it's been turnover at the auditing level, and of course, as we all know right now, that's just become worse in the last year, pushing two years now, since COVID happened, et cetera. But us coming back to you here in mid-December, and your report's not due to DESI until the thirty-first, and further indicates we didn't have any of those issues, but I do like to go over those two items with my boards each year, because by the nature of the audit process, we don't run it to you all at one time per year, and so it's, it's the opportunity for you guys to, to hear directly from us how things did or didn't go in the course of the audit. And then the second letter that accompanies the audit report is the management letter, and we already put that, had to report that finding two times within the audit report, and then this letter just requires us to do it an extra time too. I guess really drive that home. So that is the conclusion of your two thousand and twenty-one audit report. Can I answer any questions?
I got a question on page thirty-three, the audit report, section one. Be significant deficiencies reported. Can you explain that?
That was what I explained as far as the segregation of duties and having...
Okay, that was the main...
Yeah, separated then between the, like, the assets and the...
Which we did that last year. That's hiring more people, right?
Yes, so that is part of the issue. Yes, you're correct. Is that it's not reasonable to just hire extra people, you know, just to segregate duties for smaller individuals, like entities such as your district.
Okay, thank you.
Um, yeah, no good question. I usually say that. I must have missed that.
And that was the only significant deficiency that you found.
Correct, correct.
That's all I have. Anyone else? All right. Thank you. Have a good evening.
All right. Thank you all. You have a great evening and happy holidays.
Thank you. Merry Christmas. All right, we'll move on to patron input, review reopening plans. Six months. Do we have any patrons that want to comment? Staff? Do we have a window to select? Molly, do you want to hear anything from Molly, what she's seeing? Yeah, Molly, you want to give us any updates or anything you want to touch on? You don't have to. I mean, I think we know what's going on.
I'm being very proactive by doing the testing. I've had very good views from the parents on wanting their kids to stay in and doing the testing. All the kids are doing well with it. So a lot of the surrounding schools aren't testing, aren't really helping the situation. My biggest job is to keep the kids in school, but also to keep everybody healthy, and so by being proactive, by, you know, doing the testing and just monitoring those kids that have been, you know, on quarantine or being exposed, is a big priority in all of this. So just being the proactive part, I mean, I'm ordering tests like crazy, because I'm testing all the time, but I think it's important. I mean, I've got forty-one students in school. I mean, I've got forty-one students in school on quarantine or that we're monitoring for exposure.
So they had possible exposure, but we're still asking about letting them stay in school.
And testing.
They get a test and we know they had exposure, then about five days later, and fourteen, so that'd be ended that time.
Yeah, I mean, they're on, they're still, it was every, no matter what, if you're, if you're potential exposure, it's always fourteen days, but we test three times within the first seven days, and that's kind of the big highlight of, you know, contagious area. So we just monitor that. Some of those, even those forty-one are vaccinated, several of my cases, I do have a lot of vaccinated kiddos, so that's helpful. I only have to test them one time. And that's just to be sure. So just being proactive is, is just the important thing of it. I know that there's a lot of stuff going on, everybody's completely different in their, you know, ideas and minds, but I'm working alongside of Monitab, making sure, you know, I'm doing the right thing and I'm just checking the cases and stuff like that, but
They seem to be a little more relaxed now, too, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they are very confident in me. They definitely say that I am one of the very few that is very proactive in what I'm doing, and they trust in what I'm doing and know that, I mean, they want, they don't want to see kids, you know, stay at home and learn virtually, they want the kids in school. So, you know, I, I feel like we're working well together and, you know, they believe in what I'm doing and they definitely support me in that.
I'd say probably a lot of what Molly's done is prevent just a massive outbreak of kids, you know, passing around the entire building, and maybe we'll get some kind of shutdowns, which we can't continue it. So some of the measures she's putting in place, does the kid have it or not, you know, they don't need to send them home. So I think that testing helps mitigate, that's the word of the last two years, right? Keep that from happening, you know, just a super spreader school where we don't have anything under control, where we can keep it from spreading around. But it's, it's tough to deal with it.
At this point, I have ten positives, two will come off tomorrow morning, so eight pretty much, that's between staff and students.
And we're doing okay with testing kids, as far as the number of those available?
I'm ordering weekly, or two times, so, yeah. I did have to go once and purchase more, because it just wasn't coming in fast enough. But now, I mean, I mean, after Thanksgiving, it hit hard and it hit fast. So now that I just stay way above it.
So the two waves, the right when we came back to school, we have about a hundred quarantines and cases, which are coming off some break, and then right after, we came after Thanksgiving, so anybody want to take a guess what it's going to look like after Christmas?
Zero.
Yeah, zero, zero, right?
Just making sure, those, because we're only supposed to order for two weeks, and the ones that I'm getting are expiring pretty much. So I have to be careful in how I order and make sure I have it, you know, because they, they only want me to order for two weeks, because they are now expiring quicker than they had been.
And that is not the deep nasal swab, blood test or anything like that, it's a very light, like a Q-tip on the inside of your nose, it's not a venous test, it's not scraping your brain there. All right, we're going to move forward with the reports, we'll start with superintendent report.
Molly and I will go back and forth a little bit on this one. We have a, we've been working on a Department of Health and Senior Services health grant for, Dr. Rob, forgot to put a zero in his calculator, I thought it was a twelve thousand four hundred dollar grant. It's a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollar grant, so we are working to, we look at supplies, we look at equipment that will help our nurse, I think just basically saying help us test better, be more functional, they're selling our computers, equipment, tables, anything nursing related almost, it's kind of falling under this grant, you get about two hundred dollars per kid. So we're going to be turning that in and making the claims on that, but we have a short window to kind of get that done, so appreciate Molly, you know, they're working with me on that, so it's a good thing. The grants keep coming.
I was going to ask about that. How do you source those? I mean, I mean, is there a resource you go to that kind of tries to group those, you know, which ones?
Grants?
Yeah, I mean, I just wondered how
Well, I'll tell you where I picked up on this one. Okay, so I walked up to the NSBA, Stephanie and I were walking around, and one of my, I mean, they just keep flowing out, so here's the value of going, that, that, that trip got us a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, oh, it's because I'm walking around and coming across a former nurse friend of mine who is involved with a lot of nurses and overseeing it, and she tells me about it. Well, then I go check my email and it's buried in DESI stuff. And Molly says, have you seen this? And just like the day I came back, I said, no, I haven't. So sourcing the grants, there is a page on DESI that has COVID-nineteen updates or something like that, and they just kept, they have just kind of kept on kind of going, but it's just like, do we qualify for this? Is this something we really need, or have we already met that need? And we've been tagging on to the ones that make the most sense.
So there's a list, is there a list?
Yeah, I mean, I could just, I guess I'm kind of picturing that there's all these things out here and we, we learn about them sometimes, and maybe sometimes not.
Right, yeah. We haven't missed too many.
Well, I didn't know if there was some sort of vendor or service that, you know, obviously subscribe to that can help source the, you know, provide those to us and filter to us, I didn't know if there was anything
We're working on a FEMA grant, for example, right now, they contacted us, a company did that actually is servicing a lot of districts with some of the new air filtration, QB Angel, it's used at Purdue University hospitals, McDonald's, whole new way to think about it, it's right up in the ceiling tile. So they're contacting districts sometimes, they're calling me, or looking around on the website, and they're saying, hey, this is available, or say, apply, and we're jumping on it. And you heard, we had about, what, one point three million dollars in federal money come in last year? We're chasing it. I've got a board that's got two sides, middle, just following requirements, they're all different. This application's a little different from the other ones, so you're following a whole bunch of different steps. The one with the filtering software follows FEMA, so that's a whole different animal in itself, getting into their website, double authenticate, double authentication and fifteen, fifteen-character password that you have to get in to deal with that thing.
That should be a
That should be what?
Stand in line.
Stand.
I usually use thirty-five.
It's, it's a deal, you're like a little fair dragon.
Well, I would, I would just would imagine, there's an idea for someone to make some money as a vendor, I mean, it just seems like, the ROI on, it seems like you would be able to find, if, if some, if someone was step, could step in and kind of have a full listing, would provide access to, you would maybe be able to find some stuff you wouldn't have otherwise known about.
I, I try to, I've probably attended more meetings in the last two years than I did the first two years, probably ten times more, just, just like trying to stay in the loop of what's going around. We sent Molly out, we sent Lisa out, to her bookkeeper, you know, Nancy's been out, Leanne's been out, we just try to stay in the loop of what's happening, that happens in short order. Superintendent's talk. Okay, so that's DHSS. Accelerus, we have a, a new curriculum that's going to be new. They're going to give us about six thousand dollars a year. It's a new class this semester, we're part of the pilot program, the Department of Defense is sponsoring this as well, they're one of the major sponsors of it. Ms. Metter has been working to bring that to us as part of pilot, I think probably the only one in the conference doing it. Ms. Metter, do you want to speak to that just a little?
We are the only ones in this conference, and we're only about three schools in the state. And I talked to Eleanor today, who is my contact there, there, there are several schools that are going to start at next hall, but there are only three of us that, I said, let's do this, let's not wait, let's see how it goes. So I visited with her today of what it's going to look like. Really, it's a class about connecting what you're good at, what you want to do, what you like, and taking your talents, and then how to help our community, our world, it's got innovation involved, and it's got collaborative, it's, it's just got everything, I just think it's new. I'm excited about it, I don't know if you can tell that or not.
Their curriculum is completely built.
Yeah, it's built for us, our teachers will facilitate.
It's meant to find that student's passion, what they're good at, learning how to collaborate. I've gone through some of the videos on it, on what it uses with students, invest them to work in teams. It's kind of like Project Lead the Way, except students lead with their interests, and they have a lot of data banks that are connecting to like Stanford University, experts in different fields, from food shortages to weather catastrophes, how to respond, how to solve problems, even in the local area. So we're, we know we're part of the pilot, so we're a little bit of the guinea pig, but I think Ms. Metter, where you got like twenty-five kids?
Twenty-five students signed up for it, and there was many more who were signed up for it, so, but we had to kind of put it at a limit. And so we have one class, it'll be a semester class, our goal is that we offer it multiple times with different facilitators. There were some teachers who sat in that webinar with us, I, I think it's going to be a good thing, we'll find out.
And there's a link on your, your board report, I can show you what that looks like. Also, with Project Lead the Way, Ms. Pettigrew gave me some assistance and made some contacts, and we both became aware of a new cybersecurity project to add a class for teaching kids. Clint doesn't know anything about cybersecurity, am I going to tell him about later? And so this is a class that Ms. Metter's also been working, helped bring about along with Ms. Pettigrew, and that is a grant with Joaquin Martin. And Project Lead the Way, the coordinator called us, and thought we would be a good school for that. So that's a good sign, they, they see the good things going on in the elementary, we're starting to spread up to the middle school and high school now.
This will be the high school, this will be the high school class. So elementary has it, middle school has it, this will be the high school PLT department.
And I'm excited about that one, especially if you're locking in with one of the major industries, I don't think they're being used out of cyber, cybersecurity in the future much.
Oh, a lot of them.
Yeah, a lot of them. All right, Bond Projects update, just got an update from Maya today, and I think I sent that to you guys on your email, just general overview, the ADA grant is installed and done, it's over at the elementary, Kelly Colder, passed inspection yet, new things to do yet, new ceiling, fix that front track out, good. So I have, locks things pretty good, lets me know
Hands rails, everything?
Oh, that's in, they've got it cemented in and
Well, I have the videos
He's going to come back and put our flagpole up and do just a little more gravel between sidewalk and the interior.
Yeah, we're going to put lighting in there, or whatever.
Yep, there's lighting coming.
Pardon?
There's lighting coming in there.
Halfway lighting, I don't know.
It's going to have a
Overhead.
It's going to have a new
It's going to have a better light outside.
I was going to say it.
I identified it, I identified it with Maya, she's got it on
But it looks nice, it is good.
Yeah. Trophy case, we'll have a new place to kind of display some things right up front, just passing the dust and fuel doors, everything but the blacks, so they're going to be working on that next week when we're out of school. We've got the broadcast room tables, went down, took a look at those, those look great, we'll be putting those together. Concession countertop, we'll actually have a piece that's cut correctly this time, so we're looking forward to that. We've got the wood doors for the conference room area and making that place for behavioral health, so those, those have come in and look great. And they've got a lot of work going on over Christmas break, so we've got the secure dust and fuel work there with both windows, we've got some, all the door handle locks are in, so the push button dead bolts are coming in over the break, see if they can get them all in in a week. There's some dust and fuel door painting that's going on, and that can be that rose green color or whatever that is. And we've got some tile to fix and some of the cover bases, so. Any questions? We might want to start taking a tour a little bit, they think they've got a board meeting installed, meet in the library or something, and take a little tour.
We were talking about the tile, we were talking about that T in the front.
Uh huh, correct, yeah, I pointed that out, we've got some half pieces in there that just don't look right.
I'd show that to Jason Gold pepper. Tile of the entry of the side door doesn't look very good either, it doesn't match.
Yeah, I'll talk to you about that. You're talking about some flight, some sort of venue?
Yeah, right at the counter. If you look at the floor right there, that
What's that?
Yeah, it just doesn't work.
All right, so progress, parks finally coming in, boats coming in from wherever, I guess, I don't know. Okay, and there's a map, administrators have been given a Herculean task of holding summer school, and there's a map, if you click that link and seeing what areas would be closed off, but I think, they think they can do it. And we won't affect summer school, we have four Kelly Colder buildings, going to be on in mothballs and dust and ceiling tile out. We'll do our best, Kelly, they'll be all right. But we're still making plans on that. Okay.
Yeah, administrator reports, any questions for administrators tonight? Attendance trending up, I noticed. And ANCI, a question for you, we have a hundred and four students, Tobias?
I do.
It seems like a lot.
Yes, it is a lot, we're busy. When you look at the percentage, we're right where the state percentage is now.
Is that right? That's about a sixth of our school, isn't it?
Our K-12 has stayed very steady, and we're right where we're supposed to be with K-12. What changes ours is our early childhood kids. And we are bursting at the seams with identifying preschoolers. But that's state money, state and federal money, it doesn't cost the district anything. And providing those early intervening services will cost us less in the future, because we're able to hopefully get some kids where they're kindergarten ready when they come in, and we have to provide not as intensive services. But we have, we are finding more and more students who have significant needs, so.
Yeah, I just thought the numbers were odd, because I've been trending up.
The, when you look at our, our trend, I've included
Yeah, from twenty, twenty, yeah.
Yeah, so you can see
Not significantly, though.
No, and the real difference is our early childhood kids.
From nineteen.
Yeah, so we had ninety-eight, and then we added two, and this year we've added
Thanks, I just thought the number was
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Hansel Bill, Bill's a lot of questions, people we have to have a place for those kids and have support for them, too, it's a honor. Any other questions on the administrative reports? I made a copy of bids that we received. Are you, where are you going to get in? Awesome, all right, we'll just wait here for you, we're at that spot. Can you hear everything, Aaron? Aaron, are you doing okay?
Yes.
Deep resonant voice just came to the speakers. Hey, Matt, you on? Matt, you got yourself on mute, I think.
You just muted him, Terry. Oh, he's muted.
There he is. Can you hear us? Hurts from. Matt?
Matt, I'm here. Can you hear me?
We got you.
All right.
Okay, we got the bids. Does he have anything to tell us about those or your opinion?
Yeah, so just very quickly in summary, um. Let's see here. Hang on one second. I'm trying to pull up. My app just closed down. Bear with me one second. Okay, so we had four responses on the, on the bid. First aid community bank, Commerce Bank, US Bank and Central Bank. Central Bank came in at a 190 on the five-year. I know at the time that I, I typed this up, they had not responded yet. And I, with this, and aggressive this bid, as Commerce came in at, I just went ahead and let them hear their response. So we can tell, you know, what they were willing to do. But Commerce Bank, you know, from, from past experience on some of these deals, Commerce Bank has really stepped on, up on this one, I think mainly due to the, you know, relationship that, that they currently have with the district and, and the local market presence. They were very interested in, in keeping the school's business. Coming in at a 150, twenty-one basis points below the next bid of, a little bid of, of US Bank, being at a 171 on, on the five-year deal. So my, uh, recommendation would be to, to go with the low bid of Commerce Bank, especially with the, the, the presence.
Okay, and over five years, we can pay that off. Here to answer phones.
Yes. Right, that's correct.
Questions for Matt Vilio? Very straightforward. Thanks, Matt, for your work on this. What's next?
Uh, next will be the, uh, at the board meeting on the twelfth, we'll have the official documents, the lease documents approving the lease itself. Meaning the terms of the, the agreement. So we'll have the interest rate, the payments, the amortization schedule, all of that. So this is just kind of a preliminary thing of, of what's to come.
Appreciate it, Matt. Is there anybody else with any questions or, no, okay. Did you have one, Bo? All right. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. And, and, you know, Terry and I talked a little bit about this just very, very quickly, you know, at, at this conference. If you accrue some, uh, funds in, in capital and you're complaining, you know, do I want to pay this down? Or, you know, you may have another project coming up, like 1.5 percent, you may want to just go ahead and keep it in place and, and pay cash for your project. So it gives you a lot of, uh, options. So. Thank, thank you very much, guys. Appreciate it.
All right, have a good evening. Merry Christmas.
You too. Same to you. Thank you.
You're welcome. But do your business. Need to approve the grapes and associate's audit we just heard from? Need a motion?
I'm making a motion to approve the 2021, 2020, 21 audit.
So a motion by Bo to approve the 2021 audit. Second by Ms. Reed, all in favor. Motion carries. Athletic conditioning program. Bo, you have, you wanted to visit about this, so I added that to the agenda.
Yeah, I, I think, I guess where I was kind of thinking of, what I was thinking about, heard some things from the community about the idea of, of having some space available for some, for kids to work out all season for, for any sport. I know we have something going on for football right now. But I didn't know what sort of opportunities we had to maybe expand that out and offer to everyone in some, in some capacity at least.
Yeah, typically speaking, most of our stuff is not sports specific. Football's just kind of that one sporting system, a little bit more than any other sport as far as how much they do. So football's kind of one that, you know, they, they do a lot of lifting, rightfully so, their sport, you know, needs a lot more than some other sports. During the school year itself, we don't have a lot during this morning or after school for those students that are outside of a particular sport. There's a lot of lifting that goes on, sports specific, you know, girls' basketball, wrestling, I know, we're both lifting two to three days a week. That goes for the fall too, for girls' basketball, you know, a couple of days a week for lifting. In the spring, it's typically the same thing for most sports, you know. But as far as a school-wide open weights, you don't really offer that other than just summer school and then during the summer with, with weights. If it's something that you want to explore.
Well, that was, that was kind of what I was wondering from the board and obviously your opinion too on that. Is, is that something we'd be interested in offering? Some sort of conditioning program that, you know, kids could, of any sport can participate in.
Three days a week or something.
Yeah, something of that nature.
Where we had somebody stabbed.
It would be probably a stabbing.
Yeah.
Yeah, we would have to be, I mean, it would be something we'd have to research and look into.
Yeah, like a before, after school program for lifting type situation.
Yeah, something like that. I, I don't know what other schools offer, what that would look like from a stabbing perspective, but I think it'd be kind of a neat thing offered if, if it was feasible to do so.
Yeah, I think, you know, including the days, just break down the days for your school year, see where we're at compared to where you're at for like a sport, for an athletic event. Or we have an activity, see kind of, you know, fair compensation for something like that. If it's, you know, $2,500 for a whole school year to be three days a week, a morning for an hour or whatever it would be, you know, break it down and kind of see where it would be, you know, fair for everybody.
A lot of parents are trying to improve the gym. Credit a lot, you know, that's an expense up there. Doesn't want to burden, you know, and if we've got a weight room.
Yeah, I think.
Something to talk about, for sure.
Yeah, and I think with football weights going on right now, I think that'll give you a pretty good indicator of what that would look like, at least with your morning session. Just to see those kids, I think they're around fifteen, sixteen kids, depending on the morning. You know, I think it's a change in culture for some of those kids as well because I know that, you know, it's different for every sport. But I know that there's a lot of kids that have that mentality of, you know, basketball right now. So I keep going for both kids right now. I'll see, I'll see this, you know, and that's not, I think lifting weights is something that should be continued. So it helps you in every sport. So, you know, it's a culture change too. But, you know, if you, if you provide it and see that kids are going to show up, I think it's a good thing.
Do you, right now, I guess, if you say you have maybe like fifteen kids show up in the football morning, are we, are they able to support that in that room?
Uh, well, we have both, we have both rooms right now. So, yeah, that room can support fifteen kids pretty easily. We've had fourteen, fifteen-year-olds in there when we have such a high kids in there. It's pretty easy to rotate with three swat, with three power racks that you've got. And also bench press and cable machines and free weights that you have. It's pretty easy to support fifteen in there, really easy. When you get thirty kids, you've got to be in the fill house because thirty's a lot to have in a classroom. So the way we have the fill house right now is the wrestlers are in what you would consider the old weight room, that last room over there, closest to like where the bleachers are. Because that's a forty by forty, which is the same size as a wrestling mat if you took the claws out. So it gives them a perfect room for a wrestling mat. The middle room is still lockers that we built. And then that first room, which is the junior high football locker room, that's where the weight room is right now in the offices. And so the, the football players and wrestlers are using that first room that you come in where the coaches' offices are. That's where they do the lifting at. And the hope is that they'll have one of fifteen or sixteen kids. They'll get that up to twenty or twenty-five, especially once spring comes. Your winter sports aims, you hit more involvement.
Coach, I just have a question. It's hard to make hear everything over here in the corner, but sorry, I repeat self-explanatory.
You're okay.
Okay, if you have this, are you offering it during school time, weekends? Is it a conditioning class? What?
Uh, well, right now, it's just, it's three days a week is what Coach, Coach Doozy's doing. It's three days a week. What we've done in the past is during the summer, summer, summer school is four or five days a week. We've done it both ways. Covid summer, we did it June, July. But, you know, it's usually not going to be during the weekends. It's going to be during the weeks. So, you know, I think it's just to see what kids want, to see what you want to offer.
And a quick question too, just for fun. Do the boys come up here to condition for basketball?
Uh, for basketball?
Not basketball.
For football? Six o'clock?
Yeah, I think loading guns is fine.
Yeah.
I was just curious on that point.
Yeah.
We've also had some pretty good success in summer school with bigger, faster, stronger.
Yeah.
Being a lot of kids.
There's plus kids in that, but.
There's five classes offered throughout the two days, weights. There's a total of four weights classes offered, one body conditioning class. And then something that we did different this year was, we have the eighth graders are flipping it semester where the first half of the eighth grade is in physical education, the first semester, while the other half is in weights. And then they reverse second semester so they get that exposure in eighth grade to weight training and body conditioning in both of those classes. So trying to build that from that middle school area on. But that's something we changed this year to have that class at the eighth grade level. So it's also being, during the school day.
And if you look at that strength and conditioning thing I made, that's there for you. That's the semester, junior high one that has twenty-three in it. And then the high school that we have seventy-five in currently, seventy-five high schools in total.
Yeah, I think with Coach Doozy doing this great, I just was wondering if there's a way to expand that out. If we could.
Yeah. I'll work on it. See what you guys want. I mean, I can present you with a couple of different options and see what we want to do. And then, you know, we can, we can present, we can do it a few different ways as far as compensation goes. At first, we can do it just on a, you know, monthly deal and say, this is how much you get per day for this first month. And if we see we only have six kids that show up, we can say, well, I don't know if the juice is worth the squeeze here. But if we have thirty-five kids showing up, we might say, okay, let's do it. So maybe we can look into it.
Athletically, I mean, I think that makes a world of difference.
Well, yeah, yeah. If you look at those kids that came down to work freshman from Elias that have been in a weights program, they're, since they were in fifth, sixth grade. And, you know, they look, they're small, but you can see little muscles on them. You know, they look like they know what a weight room is. And, you know, just having that, having that, you know, foundation of weightlifting is huge.
Yeah. Discussion? Any more? Yeah, if you want to look into that, would I circle back on that, Bo? Do you have anything else on that?
No, no, I appreciate it. Thanks for giving me that.
All right. With that, that brings us to our executive session. Bo, would you?
Sure, yeah. Yeah. Who needs to be included in that?
Um, it's just Gordon and me.
You don't want me to be there for our recommendation?
I think you're fine.
Okay, I'm fine with that. I am perfectly fine with that.
You made a big sight of getting home.
Well, I'll make a motion. We move into the executive session. We're going to six one zero point zero two one to discuss Article three and thirteen.
Thank you. Motion by Bo.
Second.
Second by Stephanie. Aaron?
Yes.
Nancy? Ashley?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Anna, yes for me. Thanks, everybody.